Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our final workshop of 2016. It has to do with pilot program for lead service lateral replacement. So with that, I will turn it over to City Manager Rooff.
I'm probably going to promptly turn it over to Mr. Robby. But this is something that we've reported to council previously about lead service. Not technically a grant program, but it's a loan program that we were recently awarded a half million dollars. And we're going to talk about what studies we've done to investigate where we go from here with this program. Jim, James?
Yeah, I think it's a good statement. The Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources notified municipalities earlier this year that they had some additional funding available through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program that they're making available as principal forgiveness loans, essentially a grant. And the only reason that that money was available was because they had not fully utilized their allotment of principal forgiveness dollars in previous years. So they were using that to really kind of help municipalities get a jumpstart on trying to get a handle on, you know, lead water services in the community, not only on the public side, but on the private side. And the intent of this funding program is really to help municipalities, help the private side, the private property owners, replace their lead services where they have them. So we have been, as staff, we've been working with staff from CH2M Hill. CH2M Hill does a lot of work for us on both the water and wastewater utilities. With us tonight, we have Linda Moore and Todd Elliott, who will be giving the majority of the presentation tonight. But really what we're focusing on tonight is the way we applied for the state fiscal year 2017 principal forgiveness loan was to establish a pilot program to, you know, help us really get a good understanding of how we can develop a good, effective program. You know, we're not going to be able to think of everything. So we really thought establishing a pilot program and, you know, kind of getting our feet wet and using what we're learning from our counterpart utilities to help us shape our program is really a good way to tackle it and then, you know, kind of start small and build into the bigger program. So, and we want to give you some information on where we're at right now with not only our research, but our development of some ideas and concepts that we're going to be, you know, coming back to you and for some additional guidance in the future moving forward. But, you know, it really starts with us being able to just give you the information that we've been able to gather so far. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda. One thing, you know, please, if you've got any questions at any point in time, you know, don't wait till the end, just, you know, let us know right away. And, you know, we'll kind of try to keep an eye on the clock. I'll, you know, hopefully rely on Mark a little bit because the clock's behind me, so I can't see it, to kind of keep us on task and, you know, keep us moving with that time slot. But, you know, I want you to be able to just ask them and, you know, have a conversation as we go rather than trying to save questions till the end. So with that, Linda, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, James. Appreciate those opening remarks. You covered everything that I planned to say with this introductory slide. And I just wanted to follow up to say I'm a senior project manager with CH2M Hill and Todd Elliott is a drinking water technology lead with our firm. And it's been our privilege to serve the Oshkosh Water Utility for nearly 10 years. Oops, excuse me. This afternoon, as James said, we are going to present information, background information on lead and drinking water. We're going to discuss efforts that have gone into divine the pilot program to replace privately owned, the private side of the lead service lines in 2017. And we're going to discuss planning efforts that target replacement of all the lead service lines in the city of Oshkosh. Todd and I are going to use some acronyms. You're going to see them in the PowerPoint slides and in the information that was provided in the council packet. We'll refer to the Preeminent Drinking Water Professional Society, the American Waterworks Association, the Leading Copper Rule, lead service lines, lead service line replacement, the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and the U.S. EPA. All three of the bottom regulatory agencies enforce laws and statutes and guidance for water utilities in the state of Wisconsin. Our presentation today is about 23 slides. And about halfway through, I'm going to turn the podium over to Todd. And we're also going to show one, approximately one-minute-long, public educational clip. And as James said, interrupt, I'll try to ask if there's any questions after every few slides and certainly when we transition the podium. And I apologize for the quality of my voice. I caught a cold.
I'm here. Appreciate you being over there, Linda.
Thanks, Mark. The most common sources of household, in households, of lead exposure is lead-based paint and dust from lead-based paints as they deteriorate and lead in contaminated soils. Lead can also drink, leach, into drinking water when it's conveyed in piping made of lead or piping that has lead solder or plumbing fixtures that are manufactured with lead. The EPA estimates that up to 20% of an adult's exposure to lead is from drinking water. And if you're a formula-fed infant, that percentage could be as high as 60%. Exposure to lead may result in behavioral problems and learning disabilities. Young children, infants, and fetuses are the most susceptible because of their development stage. And other risks that can be posed to adults include kidney damage or hypertension if there's high levels of lead in one's blood. The bottom line is that the Centers for Disease Control have come out and stated that there is no safe lead blood level and that all reasonable actions should be taken to minimize or eliminate sources of lead exposure to children. They also stand in support of the U.S. EPA's maximum contaminant level or lead action level of 15 parts per billion. And one part per billion, for your reference, is like one second in 32 years. Lead service line replacement presents a challenge across the nation. Earlier this year, the American Waterworks Association estimated that there's over 6 million lead service lines in our country. And the Wisconsin DNR estimated there's over 176,000 in the state of Wisconsin. As council members, you know how costly it is to replace buried infrastructure like water mains and sewer lines. And it's expensive to replace lead service lines. What becomes particularly challenging with this buried asset, this portion of the water distribution system, is that a part of it is owned by the private property owner and a part is owned by the city. So in this graphic, you see the blue water main, the portion of the service line that's owned by the city, up to what's called the corporation stop or the valve, and then the red portion of the lead service line that's owned by the property owner, along with all the plumbing that's within the property. It has been the city's practice since the Leading Copper Rule was passed, along with thousands of other utilities in the U.S., to replace the public portion of the lead service line in conjunction with a water main replacement project. Another challenging aspect of lead service line replacement is that the public portion of the lead service line cannot be replaced using funds from the water utility.
The private side.
Pardon me, I misspoke. The private side cannot be replaced using water utility funds. It's also difficult to compel private property owners to replace their lead service line without some legal vehicle for doing so. And that's why many communities have revised their ordinances to prohibit lead service lines in their public water systems. In addition to the cost association with private side lead service replacement, there's also inconvenience associated with that work and the potential to cause other property damage while that replacement's being made. The one thing that we've learned working with the city's engineering, public works, water distribution, water treatment, technical staff, is that the lead service line replacement efforts are extremely complex because of how many stakeholders are involved. There will be, in Oshkosh, thousands of property owners who would be impacted by a lead service line replacement program. And the costs in terms of time and money are significant. In the drinking water industry, among the utilities who have started lead service line replacement programs or completed lead service line replacement programs, the number-one advice they give to other communities faced with this challenge is that the only way you're going to be successful is to effectively work with many different entities, many different stakeholders within your community. We're talking about lead right now in 2016 because it was a huge part of the national conversation. You are all probably aware and recall the first quarter of the year, the national spotlight on Flint, Michigan, a community that worked to change its source of water supply, it changed its treatment water strategy, and due to a series of questionable decisions, had drinking water with elevated levels of lead. This year, the EPA is refining revisions that it proposes to make to the lead and copper rule so that, and part of their revisions are driven by the circumstances that played out in Flint, Michigan. This year, for the first time, the American Waterworks Association went on the record to say that they support only full lead service line replacement. And you may recall a few slides back where we showed the house graphic. And I mentioned that many water utilities, after the Leading Copper Rule was passed, replaced the publicly-owned portion of the service line that was made of lead. Now, science has demonstrated that that, in fact, can result in higher, temporarily higher, levels of lead in the drinking water. So as an industry, we are migrating away from partial lead service line replacements to full lead service line replacements.
Can you explain why, Linda? Why, what?
Um, because...
Because there's going to be some denial on that. And I think it's important to point that out.
What the studies that have been conducted by EPA and AWWA have shown is that when the piping is disturbed, that particulate matter that's on the lining of the lead lines actually gets disturbed and loosed and can be conveyed into the private property plumbing system. Thanks.
You're going to get that question, council. That's why I think it's really important and that's, we need to keep repeating that so people understand it because it's, there's a misunderstanding. "But nobody touched my pipes." Well, we did right at that connection, and once we did that, things start to happen.
But we had this conversation earlier in the year, and it was my understanding in our letter that we send out where we're doing utility work, that we're advising that that could...
Yeah, and the letters that went out with the construction in 2016, you know, we had learned some of those things from AWWA. And we did notify people and advise people that if you want, you know, when the utility is replacing the public side, they could come into your home, disconnect your service from your meter, and flush it without it going through your meter. I believe nobody on the 2016 program took us up on that offer. They were further advised that the next best step would be to flush your line using your external hose bib that generally, most homes have, an external hose bib that is connected immediately behind the meter. So if you flush at that point, then, again, the water's flowing through the meter, but it's not getting into the rest of your system. So, you know, you're having an opportunity to flush any of those loose particles that could have been, or particles that could have been loosened, flush them right out the external hose bib without them getting caught inside. If the particles end up being flushed through your internal plumbing, then they can become trapped on the little strainer on the inside of your faucet. So then what we recommend is if you're going to flush there, to take the very end of your faucet apart and clean that filter or that strainer out to remove any of those particles. So those were kind of the steps that we had outlined. And, you know, the most effective would, you know, would be to allow our staff to flush it at the meter. You know, unfortunately, you know, a lot of people are not home during the day when the construction activity is taking place. So, you know, like I said, we had nobody that was able to take us up on that offer. But I do know that several people were flushing at their external hose bibs.
Thanks, James.
You're welcome.
And the last talking point we wanted to share on this slide is that the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, which is federal money that's administered by the Wisconsin DNR, for the first time this year, was made available to help defray the cost of private side lead service line replacements. So they're only helping fund what is now known in the industry as full lead service line replacements. And the monies that the city has received from the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program will be targeted on the private side.
And I think one important thing to note from some of the meetings that I've attended with the Department of Natural Resources, this funding through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program administered by the DNR will only be available for state fiscal year '17 and '18 unless the state or federal legislators approve...
More money.
Yeah, approve allocating more funds to the programs. At this point in time, the DNR, you know, they did not utilize all of their principal forgiveness dollars in previous years. So they're using that money from previous years to fund this program for state fiscal year '17 and '18. But unless something happens at the state or federal legislature level, you know, we expect this program to only be available for those two years.
Okay, we've discussed some emerging actions with respect to best practices and news and pending changes in regulations, all that have been in the media this year. But what has taken place in the last 30 years has been a concentrated effort to reduce lead in drinking water. With the passage of the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Leading Copper Rule... copper rule, which established a maximum contaminant level, or a lead, a lead action level of 15 parts per billion, the banning of the use of lead in plumbing fixtures. And we know that the regulations are going to change, and they're going to become more prescriptive, and we don't know exactly what the requirements are going to be. We have a good idea, and we'll outline some of those, but I wanted, with this particular image, to convey the fact that this is a changing and emerging issue, driven both by science and by policy issues. One organization this year that has gone on the record of making very specific changes to the lead and copper rule is the National Drinking Water Advisory Council. And in a white paper that was published about a month ago, they're suggesting that the EPA modify the lead and copper rule to prohibit or limit partial lead service line replacements, for requiring water utilities to post all of their lead and copper sampling results to the utility's website, requiring communities to prepare an inventory of their lead service lines and their location. They're suggesting that, for the entire nation, there should be dates established by which time communities will replace all their lead service lines. And they're recommending that the lead and copper rule require public water systems provide educational information and resources to their customers. And one, go ahead.
I was going to say, in your packets this past weekend, you should have received a handout from us. I don't know if the letter from the DNR came to you as well, or just, you know, some of our current items and reiterating, but if you look at the handout, that was entitled Lead Service Line Replacement, that came, that would be, next one, you know, that kind of reiterates down the left-hand side, what the comment or statement was by the Department of Natural Resources, as well as what their requirements or recommendations are. And you'll see a lot of these requirements and recommendations are, you know, things that Lynda just pointed out are noted in that white paper as, you know, recommendations to the EPA. So, you know, we're already starting to see some of these recommendations coming through from the federal level to our local regulators, and, you know, they're starting to ask some of these things of our water utility, which is why we wanted to put this information together, so you could see, okay, here's what the DNR is asking of us, and, you know, for the most part, we are already doing what they're asking of us.
And that number-one item, James, where we say that sampling occurs every three years, our sampling is only, what, about 30 per sampling, is that right, for the entire city?
Come on up, Steve.
I want to hear you loud and clear.
I'll move some of my stuff here, so you can join me.
Yes, sampling is based on population, and it's also based on your implementation of corrosion control, and because we have an active corrosion control program, and our past samples have not shown us exceeding the 90th percentile, we're on an every-three-year program, and we're required by population to do 30 locations. They've tightened up the locations, they used to be tier-one, tier-two, some copper, some lead. We're trying to find 30 that are lead-led. We still have to do some copper, but, again, some of these things are changing. So we believe our sampling sites in the past have been pretty good, but we're out actively reviewing all those sites to make sure that we get them, and it will be 30 samples.
Are we getting better compliance when we ask people to allow the sampling?
Well, we'll find out, once we get these sites selected, and we start working more closely with, with the members of the community, but we, we think that we'll be fine with getting the cooperation we need.
Getting back to the National Drinking Water Advisory Council recommendations, obviously, this, this information doesn't appear out of thin air. Where do the, where, how are the costs for this covered? Where does the, you know, it's going to cost money to do these things, develop these inventories, develop the educational and information, resources and that. Where does the money for that come from?
I think maybe we'll be able to better answer some of the big cost things further on in the presentation, because we have, have big pieces of that. I will say that we've been working with this program behind the scenes, doing a lot of the things that have been recommendation, recommended in the past, including trying to get public information out there with Consumer Confidence Report, trying to identify sample sites, you know, working with the community, actually making some contacts with the county health department, working through them. So we have some staff available to do some of the things they're asking for. Depending on what's coming in the future, that maybe the resource issue may become more challenging for us.
And I think I know where you're going with this. It's, it's another one of those things, they're asking us to do things and not necessarily providing the funding to offset what they're asking us, of us.
But it's good to hear that Oshkosh is kind of out in front of some of these issues already.
Yeah, the vast majority of the things that were identified in the DNR letter, we are already doing. Certainly, there are some things that we will work on improving, and, you know, some of the materials that we've presented to you, you know, some draft website content and things like that goes to improving the amount of information that's available. And there are a couple of things that we'll have to work on implementing. There was one or two things, I think, that we really didn't have in our current program that we'll have to put some effort into, in order to be able to meet that request of the department at this time.
So with that nice segue, thanks again, James. Here's an example. We did put, put together some helpful resources, and there's a wealth of good information for consumers on the subject of lead and drinking water. And we tried to pull some draft language in that everyone working on it felt was good for Oshkosh, because every community is, is doing what's right for their community. And one of the things that we've suggested might be helpful is including a short video clip like this, which USA Today put together earlier this year.
In most cases, the water entering and leaving the treatment plant is lead-free. When water becomes contaminated, it usually happens as it enters your property. More than 7 million U.S. homes are estimated to have service lines made of lead that can leach into water. Millions of homes built before 1986 have soldered fixtures that can leach lead. To reduce the leakage of lead, many treatment plants add anti-corrosion chemicals. Some of them create a protective coating inside pipes. Some utilities have programs to replace lead service lines, but will only address the part they own, unless the homeowner pays the hundreds or thousands of dollars to replace the entire line. Many homeowners don't replace their segment because it's too expensive. Replacing only part of these lines can make things worse. Vibrations from construction can break free pieces of protective coating. These pieces continue may flow into your home or get stuck in your plumbing, and that means lead could be in the water when you turn on your tap.
We're just about to transition from me to Todd, and the last handout that was in the council packet, and the topic of this slide here is what other water utilities are doing. Some of you, and that, that handout includes the three communities we have shown there, and also Washington, D.C. Some of you might remember the lead and copper rule issues in 2004 and 2005 in Washington, D.C. And every community has taken a different approach to their lead service line management issues. In D.C., as you see at that table, they made lead service line replacement on the private property side voluntary. And as a result of that, less than 20% of the private lead service lines have been replaced. So while D.C. has been replacing the public, they're behind on the private, and now with the changes in the regulations, they're going to have to catch up on that portion of their program. Madison Water Utility was featured in the national news this year because in the, about 2000 to 2010, they replaced all of their lead service lines. And as a part of their program, they provided a cost share, or a 50% reimbursement, to a private property owner for the cost of their private lead service line, up to $1,000 maximum value. Green Bay is, is in a very enviable situation, because they have far fewer lead service lines to replace in their water system. And they're envisioning being able to replace all of the remaining public and private lead service lines within the next six years, and being able to provide 100% cost share or reimbursement to the private property owner for their private lead service line replacement. Racine is a community that's similar to Oshkosh, in that they're just starting in 2017 with the Safe Drinking Water Loan monies, to start working on the several thousand public and private lead service lines that are in their system. For 2017, they're planning to offer 100% reimbursement, up to 2,500 bucks per lead, for private lead service line, for as long as their money lasts. So with that, that background information, we're going to switch now the conversation more into Oshkosh-specific details. Are there any questions on the kind of national or general background information? Okay, Todd?
All right, thank you, Lynda. So as she men, as Lynda mentioned, we'll be transitioning to talk more specifically about the city of Oshkosh, and how this lead issue is pertinent to you. So we can probably start with the map. I do believe you have a handout with the map of Oshkosh, and it's also shown here on the PowerPoint presentation. And through working with the city department and GIS information, compiled an estimation of how many lead service lines are in the city of Oshkosh currently. The area that of highest likelihood you have lead service lines on that, both the public and private side, are shown in the red, or salmon-colored there on the city map. So it tends to be the older portions of the city, pre-1960. Newer portions, you know, after 1960, generally speaking, would not have lead service lines. So that's the area of focus, as we look forward to a lead service line pilot project. So that red area there represents about 1/3 of the total city connections, about 11,000 homes. Some good news, of course, as you saw from that video earlier, is that the city is adding a corrosion inhibitor to the water in the form of orthophosphate, so that has helped the city stay in compliance with the lead and copper rule for the last 20 years, and has also been proactive about public side replacements for the last five to 10 years. They have replaced about 1,400.
When did we start replacing those?
Is it five?
1,400?
I believe in the late 90s. Prior to that, I believe, you know, we weren't looking at full utility replacements all the time with street reconstruction projects. So I believe it was the late 90s to early 2000s when we really started in earnest, you know, reconstructing, you know, all of the water and sewer, and thus getting all of our portion of the water services.
So, again, that's just to remind folks that that's just on the city side.
Correct.
Do we happen to know, in our, we started doing the inventory this year, is that right, as far as private side, as we're doing construction? Do we happen to know how many people have actually replaced the private side?
At this point, we do not have that information. You know, we, you know, the numbers that are presented here were, you know, based off an estimate based on when homes were constructed. We have asked our water utility inspectors, as they were out on construction projects this year, to make a note of what they were reconnecting to, so we could start developing that data. But no, we don't have a real good handle on how many private side ones may have been replaced yet, at this point.
Would they have needed to take out a permit to do that?
There should have been a plumbing permit taken for some of those, and, you know, those are some of the things, you know, we're, we're working through with inspection services to try to figure out what kind of information we have available. One of the challenges being, you know, if somebody was just fixing their water service, say, they got a leak and a plumber dug down, okay, there's a leak right here, just because lead piping was not allowed to be installed, the plumbing code still allowed them to just patch that. You know, so, you know, there's, there would be some kind of ciphering of the data in the permit system that would have to be done, to try to figure out exactly what has or has not been done. And, you know, it's a step we haven't gotten fully into yet.
So briefly, about the pilot project that we're looking at doing, the city's looking at doing over the next couple of years, again, James and Lynda have hit on these, to some extent already, but, you know, funding was made available by Wisconsin DNR to be used solely for private lead service line replacements. City of Oshkosh applied for a grant for fiscal year 17, and received a half-million dollars in that money. Right now, we're in the preliminary phases of how to spend that money, but initial estimates are, we think we can do around 200 lead service line replacements on the private side in fiscal year 17 as part of water main replacement program. There are certainly other aspects of the system that are going to need improvement, including some high-priority customers that develop a database for. I think there's a pretty good estimation of where the schools and daycare centers are, but part of the purpose, as we look forward to fiscal year 18, is, assuming we do get that money from DNR for another half-million dollar grant, is to focus in on those areas and get those replacements made. But there is some field verification required to see, do they in fact have lead, and then how much, and how much is it going to cost? But right now, the, you know, the focus is on these water main replacement projects. That's kind of what the city has been doing to date, and is a relatively cost-effective way to do the replacements. As mentioned before, there will also be some other pilot project elements, so in addition to the replacements, city will be setting up a pre-qualification system, or mechanism, to get licensed plumbers to do the actual work on the private side replacements. On the public side, that will still continue to be done by city personnel. City also plans to issue lead water filters to provide a little extra layer of protection to homeowners, so that when that work is being done, there may be some release of particles into the line for a six-month period. What is envisioned is to provide a home water filter, something that can be mounted to a faucet with a replacement cartridge that would cover a six-month period, to provide a little extra level of safety, as well as do some lead sampling, just to verify that the water's safe to drink. There'll be some updates to the city website, and information to customers, and also, initial progress right now is to look at revisions to the Chapter 20 Plumbing Code ordinance to prohibit lead service in the system, and also establish a public-private cost share, which I'll talk about here, in a little more detail through a couple of slides coming So on the topic of the cost share, I've got a graphic here that we're showing the number of lead, or sorry, the number of private lead service line replacements to be conducted in 2017, on the y-axis there, ranging from 0 to 800. And on the bottom is the city cost share, and what's that represented by, showing the number of 100%, that would indicate the city's paying 100% of the private replacement cost. 50%, for example, would be a 50-50 cost share, you know, customer pays half, city pays half. So based on initial estimates for the... So based on initial estimates for the pilot program for fiscal year 17, I mentioned, we estimate we can do 200 lead service line replacements on the private side. That assumes 100% cost share, so city's taking, using that DNR grant funding to fully pay for the private side replacement. Based on, you know, estimated costs, about $2,000 per private side lateral. Now, those costs may come in a little bit lower, or they're maybe through to some decisions here, deciding to not do 100% cost share, there is some opportunity, if there's a desire to do more lead service replacements. So again, just want to present that information as, you know, a decision point moving forward.
When you have 200 lead service laterals, what are you putting on as an estimated cost per lateral?
This graphic will answer that question. So we're, the estimate based on the numbers we had been looking at, working with the city on this, and looking at also what other systems have paid for replacements, is about $2,000 on average. Now, that'll vary based on the home or site. Longer laterals will cost more, shorter laterals will cost less, maybe other complicating factors at the site, but on average, we think about $2,000. You can see from this graphic, on the Y-axis, average cost per private lead service line replacement, ranging from 0 to $2,500 on the Y-axis. And on the bottom is, again, the cost share between the city and the private homeowner. So for example, at 100% cost share, city's paying the full $2,000 bill. 50% cost share, that's $1,000 for the homeowner, $1,000 for the city. And for 0% cost share, that would be homeowner paying the full $2,000 bill and the city not paying anything, just to provide an example.
Question being, even if you replace the private side up to the meter?
Yep.
The house still could have, if it's built prior to 1969?
Yeah, if the lead-free fixtures and solder weren't lead-free until about 1984. So, you know, even if you have a house that is, you know, fully copper, you know, I'll throw out the example, my house was built in 1969. It's all copper, but I know all the solder's got lead in it. So even if you completely remove your lead water service, you could still have interior plumbing that does contain lead.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
We can talk more. So we went, we did a cost modeling program in conjunction with the city to provide an estimate of what a full program might cost to the city paying for all the replacements moving forward. So the first graphic we've got here is fairly complicated, but I'll step you through it. So on the Y-axis, we've got annual lead service replacement program costs, that's total cost to the city, both public and private. Blue bar graphs are the public portion, so that's currently what's being done by the city using water utility funds. And green being the private side, that would have to be paid for through an alternate funding mechanism currently, if the pilot program would be paid for using the Wisconsin DNR funds. And on the bottom graph, on the bottom axis, the X-axis, in black is the cost share, so it's the same as we discussed earlier, ranging from 0 to 100%. And the program duration is in red, ranging from 10 years to 30 years. So we'll just show a couple of examples here. So for example, if you did a 10-year program, 100% cost share, total costs incurred to the city is about $7 million, which roughly 2/3 of that is associated with the public replacement, and 1/3 associated with the private replacement. Again, that private replacement would have to come from a different funding mechanism. Look at a 30-year program. So the big difference here is you're doing less laterals per year, that's why the cost is dropping. Total program cost would be about $2.2 million per year, again, with this similar ratio, about 2/3 of that with the public side using water utility funds, and 1/3 of that private side using alternate funding mechanism. So again, we wanted to present that to you so you had an idea of what the annual budget might look like. I'll show you the next graph. This would be regardless of program duration, what the total cost would look like. Total program costs are there on the Y-axis, ranging from 0 to $80 million for total program costs. Same private cost share on the bottom, ranging from 0 to 100%. And that blue area, the big blue box, that's the total investment for the public share of the lead service line replacement. It's about 40, $45 million. Again, that would be water utility funds to pay for that. And the green triangle, depending on how much cost share percentage is utilized, could be as high as $25 million if 100% cost share was implemented, for a total program cost of almost $70 million. So again, whatever the city doesn't pay for in that green triangle, you know, the customers, I showed in that previous graphic, is responsible for, and could be $2,000 or more, depending on the site. Now, the final graph.
About five minutes.
Yep. Very quickly, through the final graph, I had mentioned that there's different program costs depending on program duration. So we wanted to just give you a handle on how many lead service line replacements are we talking about per year. So on the bottom is, again, the program duration ranging from 10 years to 30 years on the Y-axis, that's lead service line replacements, total replacements per year. So for, you know, if you do the math, we've got 11,000, approximately 11,000 lead service lines in the system, divided by 10 years, that's about 1,100 replacements per year that would need to be done. So that's the top of that. If you disregard the colors for a second, just look at the top line graph, that's about 1,100. 30-year program, you'd be looking at between 350 to 400 lead service replacements per year. So that difference is about 700 lead service line replacements per year. So what that means to the city is, you know, it's more homeowners getting disrupted for a shorter program, that's more streets getting ripped up, and of course, that's more money being brought to the table on an annual basis. So just something to, you know, kind of think about, digest as you think about program duration moving forward, making decisions on that. Just for a point of perspective, that purple area at the bottom, that's approximately what the city is averaging now for their Water Main, Water Main projects and when they're doing the public side replacements, that's about 250 a year. So even at 30 years, 30-year program still account, you know, still requires an increase of 100 to 150 lead service line replacements per year. So you're still looking at an increase. So to close out, the main goal, if you look at the pilot program, is to gather lessons learned, apply them to a longer-term program regarding, working with, you know, the plumbers and the homeowners, developing website materials and handouts for customers, lead filters, get a better estimate on costs. I can envision a year from now having some revisions to those graphics as new cost becomes available. But really, it's a risk-producing project to get the lead out of the system and, you know, really provide that benefit to the city and the customers. So some of the next steps that we'll be looking at, working with you on here, is to start to look into early 2017 and beyond, is again, get this pilot program going for 2017, start planning for 2018 pilot program, figure out where the lead service line replacements are gonna be conducted, and through some upcoming workshops, hopefully make a decision on this cost share. You know, there's a big financial implication in whether you do 50% or 100%, so a decision point there. And also, potential revisions to the municipal code, if we want to make that, an ordinance change to make lead service line, you know, get rid of lead out of the lead service lines. So that's kind of what we're envisioning moving forward. That is the end of the presentation, and we'll open it up in one minute remaining for question and discussion.
So just to clarify, for the public portion of replacing lead service lines, that can be done through the water, through the utility?
And we're currently doing that.
Yes, we have been, you know, as we indicated, on our public street reconstruction projects or even on our Water Main Replacement Projects like Fifth Avenue last year, we have been replacing the publicly-owned portion of the water service where it's lead.
But for the, for the private sector, or for the private end of it, we gotta find money, is if the city is going to fund any of these cost shares, we have to figure, we have to gather that money someplace.
Someplace other than the water utility.
Other than the water utility.
Water utilities.
So basically, tax increases?
No.
Say that.
And that part of it is what we're trying to do.
Or grant funding, we can use the grant funding that we're getting, but once the grant funding goes away, the point I'm making is, is that this isn't free, and that while we do things for the public good, we will be having, it's possible that we will have to be assessing some type of a tax or a fee to complete this. Understanding that there's 11,000 of these connections, that doesn't, you know, it doesn't, there's some people that don't have these issues, that in essence would look at this and say, well, why should I be? That's something we will need to address in the future.
And that really gets to the crux, if you can just give me one second, Laurie. That really gets to the crux of why we can't use public utility dollars for it. The city of Madison did apply to the Wisconsin Public Service Commission to replace the private side lead services with their water utility rates. They were denied by the Public Service Commission. They appealed that, and the appeals court in the end ended up siding with the Public Service Commission, saying because it was selective in the people that would benefit from it, that it was, in the Public Service Commission's eyes, it wasn't appropriate to utilize those rate dollars. So, sorry, Laurie.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, it looks like in Milwaukee, they, they have kind of a lesser cost, I don't know how effective it is, interim solution. They have a public-private partnership, looks like AO Smith, United Way of Greater Milwaukee and Waukesha County, providing Aquasana brand filters to low-income lead service line owners with children. It's kind of a creative way that they address it. It doesn't look like any of the other cities listed. Well, no, Washington DC provided filters after that. Do we have a sense of how effective those filters are? Obviously, we can't fix all of this today or in the next five years.
James, if I could?
Yeah, I would, I will certainly turn that one over to you, Linda.
Living in Milwaukee County, there, there's a couple of forces at play, all of them good, because this initiative is helping to protect houses where there have been detections of high lead and beyond. And part of that collaboration from United Way and AO Smith is partially supporting the Milwaukee Freshwater Sciences or the Milwaukee Water Initiative. And part of what they're doing is getting a new product out and very broadly getting practical user experience with it. So you're right, it is innovative, and there's multiple benefits that the different collaborators are trying to achieve through that action. And certainly, there has been the announcement, starting last month in November and continuing now, about these lead filters, but there's been no commitment for future, how long. So certainly very good, you know, can't fault it, but there's, they're, they're not any further along in their planning process in terms of duration and potential ordinance revisions than Oshkosh is. Their situation is approximately 10 times the size, so we are talking about 40 to 70 million here, and in Milwaukee, it's 500 million to 750 million.
We'll be coming back to council with some ideas on what we plan to propose to do with this money. That's really the next step in the process.
Yeah, you know, this was, you know, we wanted to get some information out. Certainly, if you have any questions as you continue to go through the information or think about this, you know, please feel free to get ahold of me, and I'll work with Steve and Linda to get any responses. You know, one thing we didn't get a chance to point out, and I do want to point out here briefly, is, you know, we have been also meeting with the Community Development Department to see how we can utilize this Safe Drinking Water Loan principal forgiveness in conjunction with the CDBG funding for rehab of income-qualified housing. And, you know, we still got some work to do there, but, you know, certainly this program can be utilized to help, you know, if any of those homes do have lead services, replace them, you know, certainly at the same time as the rest of the rehab. So just wanted to point that out. That was another, one of the conversations that we're having.
Thank you, everyone. The council meeting will start promptly at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Todd, thanks.